We're live, everybody, we're live. Call the main to order, clerk, call the roll.
Councilor Cosavelli.
Here.
DePena.
Here.
Gramiano.
Here.
Notori.
Here.
Rovell.
Here.
Mayor Millman.
Here. We have a bunch of discussions up for today. We are, I just remind all the council, for the time being, since we are live streaming, just try and talk to the microphone so we can get our audio and video upgrades. That said, we do have a lot of items on the agenda for today's discussion. I'm gonna kind of pick around, just because I know some of the people that are here and some of the scheduled conflicts we might have. So I have a bunch of things that I put on. One of the items that I put on is my ongoing interest in keeping the public informed to what we're doing, whether that's through social media, the web, live streaming, I'd like to get back to newsletters eventually, and/or just outbound communications. We are a, I keep saying this, the nauseam, a $64 billion corporation that does not really communicate well to our stakeholders and our shareholders. So with that said, I've worked in many other towns, approaching 20 at this point. I know many smaller towns engage the services of outside professionals to help the governing body communicate, and I have one of those people here today, Representative Joffe Communications. Joffe?
Yep.
I've seen their work firsthand in some of the other towns that I work in. I think most recently was probably Roselle, whereby they're engaged to work hand-in-hand with the municipality, sit in on council meetings, I believe, and obviously I'm gonna let you do a presentation, but they basically sit down at council meetings, attend public events with a photographer, issue press releases, let people know what's coming up, maybe handle social media, I'm not sure about that, but definitely some outbound communications on a monthly fee for, you know, retainer, and that's that. So without further ado, I'm gonna kind of put a little strict time limit on us here today, we're probably looking at maybe 10 minutes or so.
Okay. Start the stopwatch now. Hi, everybody, is this the mic I...
That one is the recording mic?
Yes.
So it's not gonna amplify, I'll just ask you to speak as loudly, because you're gonna be picked up by the camera microphone. Just speak as loudly as you can.
Okay. In my 10 minutes, I just wanted to just pass around just some samples of... Do I keep directing the table?
Yeah, okay.
So my name is Jonathan Joffe, I'm with Joffe Communications, we're based in Bradford. We do a lot of public relations work with municipalities and school districts. I know the mayor through my work in Roselle, where we've been there now for about eight years, where we work for the borough and we work for the school district. Our work is strictly nonpartisan public information. We don't do politics. Our goal is to basically look for ways to engage the community, and so mostly what we do is that, as a quick aside, my background was I used to be a newspaper reporter at the Star Ledger, when people used to read newspapers back in the 1990s, and basically the job, there used to be three or four reporters sitting back here, and they're not here anymore. And so for you to get your word out, you now need to have, you know, professionals who can basically do the work of reporters, where we can, you know, work with you closely and see what is opportunities, I know you have a Hispanic festival coming up, what are some different ways to engage with the community? And what we do is we work with the mayor, and we work with the committee of the council of the public information. I know you're Democrat town, but you know, on different political parties, again, you know, ward-style government, maybe work with specific ward council people, to make sure that we're getting as much information about what's going on in Belville and getting it out to the community. How we do that is, as Mayor mentioned, we attend annual council meetings, we develop press releases, we do our public announcements. Once a week, we do a community digest that would go out to the observers, the Star Ledger and other media, which is basically a digest of this week in Belville, all the different things going on. What I'm circulating to you now is we also do flyers, we have a great graphics design department, that just basically, if you say to me, "Oh, we've got a, you know, a trunk, a Halloween event coming up," we come up, you saw that, we come up with like a creative way to promote it and to get it out into the public. We also, we just finished for Roselle, we do a community guide for them every single year, which is just a directory of everything you could possibly know about Roselle. It could be stuff that's, you know, bios of the mayor and council, it can be, what does a tax assessor do, how do I get my garbage picked up, what is a shade tree commission, you know, basically the nuts and bolts of municipal government, because there's so many things that are happening in this building that the public doesn't know about. You offer a lot of services to the community that the township is, this is a township, is spending a ton of money on, and it maybe is being underutilized. So what our job basically is just, all is community engagement, so...
And that could be in the form of press releases.
Yeah.
I'm just going by what I know from the past. Press, I guess you developed a media list.
Yeah.
Press releases, like we have, as we talked earlier, we just had actually the Hispanic Heritage Festival celebration, that was the first event ever. We're having this Friday, first ever food truck festival, we're having the first ever 5K run, and there's things that, like you said, there's things that happen that's not that I don't even know about, that's hard to, you know, keep track of.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, for example, like, you know, we have a 5K run coming up in another town, where we have one of our writers comes and takes photos, we may put it up on your social media channels if you have them, if not, we talk to you about how to get them, which is very simple. And again, we would just be looking for every which way to engage. And the best way to do it is to just start talking to you and find out what you're doing, and then we put together a head-to-head calendar of, here's everything that we know that's happening in November, December, January, February, and then we just execute the plan.
And that's important, because a lot of times we have scheduled conflicts with like the Board of Education. We have an event the same day they have an event, and if we had advanced notice of what we were planning in the future, we could probably avoid some of those conflicts, I think.
So what we would do is if you're interested, we would put together, and you saw it, PowerPoint from Roselle, we have just put together a scope of work that would list all the different methods that we would use to build your communications network, and then, you know, we work on annual contracts. So, you know, and if it's something that you like, we would just be going.
Are you considered professional service?
Yeah, we have a, from the towns we work, and they issue RFPs, we respond in general.
Okay. Questions?
And that's not just limited to things that are happening in town, that can be like when changes of ordinances happen, stuff of that nature, to get it out, where people sometimes, you know, residents don't know, they don't look, they don't read it, but here, if it's out in front of them, they'll know.
Yeah, and that's a great point, Councilman, too, is that we simplify ordinances, so we take the language, no offense to the attorney, we simplify it, and then we explain like, you know, what it means, why it's relevant, and then we get quotes from mayor and council about what this means for Belville, why is the town doing this.
And the example, you're right, instead of just events, like we now have our records department at the restaurants open late hours. Never in the history of Belville have we ever stayed open late hours. Now we do, besides the social media posting on our police department page, maybe I shared it, that's it. We intend on having our construction code department open late at least twice a month. Again, it would be shared on our website, whoever goes there would be on social media, I would share it on my public social media, but then it kind of, it ends there.
Another example of work we do is we write op-eds from mayors and council that basically, like, we just did one where the state encouraged education aid to a municipality, and the mayor went to Trenton, you know, argued his case, and the town got some more money from Trenton, he thought, "People should know about this, that we're out there fighting the good fight for municipality, trying to get as much state aid as we can." And that's something that, you know, people in the town should know. That's just another example.
Any questions, Councilman?
No.
Manager? Good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Just warming up.
Okay, that was item number three, I said we're gonna skip around a bit, I'm still waiting on somebody else that I think is gonna be showing up. I have an item on here called "Welcome to Belville Signs." Manager and I just had a conversation about this again. Our welcome to Belville signs that we have are 18 years old, and so recently, I think nobody realized there was a typo in the sign. Somebody noticed the typo in our recycling schedule, which they don't necessarily realize that that was every single sign that was placed throughout the township. I think we had about eight or nine of them, two are either missing or stolen, we don't know who's out there stealing the Belville signs, but one is missing in front of the 9/11 park, and one is missing in front of Hoover and Girollin, I think. So I would have no problem considering either updating the ones that are with typos in them, I don't know how you do that, since they're carved, and at least replacing the two that we have, potentially, since they are going by major intersections that are the entryway to Belville, if we had a landscaper or a nursery on board for cleaning that area. I've seen a lot of other towns, the signs are sponsored by somebody. So I remember, actually, I was on the council 18 years ago when we got these, and I think they were relatively, for what you've got, the wood, the engraving, the gold leafing, I think they were about 1,500, 800 bucks at that time. Not sure, I guess we still need two more, and I don't know how we fix, can we make it O and A? I mean, is that even possible? To carve it and save some money there, and then just do a sponsorship underneath it? And plus, it does have the, and this is, I wish Michael Perone was available, but we have the established the 1,700 date on this one.
The 1,794 one?
1,797. We've been going by the 1830...
Incorporated.
1839. 1839.
There's one incorporated.
Right, so there's founded and there's incorporated. I guess we should just pick one. I think we go mostly with the incorporated, and we go founded. But especially as Mr. Manager, we start to discuss capital items for 2019 budget, it might be something worthwhile to, for us to just pay attention to, I think.
Capital with an A, right there.
Capital with an A. As long as they last five years, I think we're good, right? If they don't get stolen within five years. I don't know who would steal, I mean, they're in concrete, unless they get hit in an accident maybe, and just never...
We could have a record of that, though.
Yeah. So yes, this is capital. Doctor, I'm sure you're, this doesn't...
Did we talk to that someone?
I'm sure.
No.
You're not happy with that either, the educators in the room are not happy, I bet. But yeah, so that would be something that I'm worth, I got no problem discussing that for capital items.
Thanks.
We're looking for your capital.
Yeah. Founded. I know Mr. Martino has asked a question to me about where we stand with the codification updates. I know that there's also a link from our website to the company, that does say that they are about 18 years old. I know the clerk has advised that we are in the process.
I spoke to her tonight, they're currently finishing 2017, up to 17, and she will give me the price to finish that up in...
Well, she's currently...
Up to 17, she's finishing up to 17.
So all we need is a price for 18?
What she's done up to 17.
Oh, we don't have a price yet?
Not yet, just getting it to me.
So she's... I just want to be clear, she's finishing up the price, or she's finishing up the work?
Right. There was $50,000 budgeted for the recodification.
What, just for the benefit, I think everybody in the room knows what codification is, but for the benefit of people that are watching, codification is basically the organizing of the ordinance book. So every time that we take action, and we vote, we amend, or we change, we put new, it's gotta be organized in a book, that's not so simple to figure out, as our town attorney can attest to, as he tries to thumb through old ordinances and looping the new ones, correct?
Yes.
Yes, is he not?
And the public should be able to go to our ordinances and know that they're current. So now they go to the website, and yes, it comes up, but it's from 2002, and a lot of them probably, I don't know how many of them, have morphed into something completely different now. So, police department, residents, everybody needs a source. You used to go into a clerk's office and have a book, but everybody has computers now, so, I mean, I can do it on my phone. Other towns, I just go on my phone, and I go in, I can search...
Or we do have the link, it's just, it's 18 years old, it's 16 years old.
I can't rely on it and doing what I do, so what I have to do is every time I want to look at an ordinance, I have to go to clerk's office, then they have to pull the ones, and that's a lot of their time that they don't want to do, and I don't blame them, and when all I should be able to do, and everybody else, every resident should be able to click on and see what the noise ordinance is, or see what the, you know, that kind of thing is.
The def ordinance, the pool ordinance.
Everything.
Chicken ordinance. So I'm just, I just want to be clear, Cal, is she's finishing 2017, she's finishing a price, or she's finishing the work?
The work.
But we don't know how much, we never had a price?
She was paid around $14,000, I believe, two years ago, to get up to speed, and then we sent her the rest.
Oh, okay, so she's, alright.
Which one includes...
Yeah, if we get the 17 done, and then we're working on 18, and 18, that's kind of reasonable, and the fact that it was, it's 16 years old is...
Crazy.
I know for a fact that Lynn Hurst had an issue whereby somebody utilized the zoning ordinance and purchased the house that wasn't in the zone anymore, and that there was actually some litigation on that, which is why most municipal sites out, sent out to the codification companies with a kind of disclaimer. I know the title page there has it, as to when it was last updated, but residents deserve to have updated.
Absolutely.
Our councilmen.
I mean, thank you, that was one of my questions to talk about.
Was that one of your various items? I've seen number 11's various items.
All various.
You can eliminate one now.
Yes, so, no, actually two, but the one prior. But the question I have to that is, because I was looking through ordinances, and I continue to look through, and through hearsay throughout the town, you know, well, this was what it was, ordinance this, ordinance that, so when I ask if there's an ordinance that, where is the ordinance that was changed, there may be no paperwork, so are we going on what it is today, no matter how we got there? If that makes sense? Is that what I'm saying? So right now, you could say hypothetically, there is an ordinance there.
I understand what you're saying.
Go ahead.
Just for an example, say a no parking on Nox Street, they just changed that, and it goes to court. The court, well, I send that all to the court, and they keep a track of it as well, so we're all up to date.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Once it's codified...
So they're going by what we, the most recent, not what you might find online.
Right, okay.
And once it's codified, it shows when the changes were made, so there's a history, so that if somebody wants to see the history, if somebody wants to see the history, they can go to the clerk's office and ask them for the history.
And I can pull it out and say, "It was changed on this day." Okay?
Good. Codification update, so we're finishing up 17. I'm assuming that once they're finished, they update their website, and there's nothing we have to do, because when we link to it, it'll be automatically updated. Let me ask you just one last question on that, I'm assuming that also includes construction code ordinances?
Everything.
Includes everything?
Everything.
Yeah, because I think our inspectors at times have, even our, even our police department has issues with the newer, like for instance, 18 years ago, we didn't have the snow on the roof of the car ordinance, so when they stop somebody, they have difficulty knowing what local ordinance is they're riding.
Hey, just real quick, just talk to her about that. I mean, our ordinance is ours, but you also have Boca Code, which is not really ours, it's federal or whatever else. Do we have links to the Boca, or any of that stuff?
No.
The Boca Code.
Like the state codes.
State codes, those kind of things.
That would definitely be part of it, update that.
Yeah.
Good, anybody else? Okay. Update on foreclos, so I put this item on mostly because, one, I'm very frustrated at, and anybody that followed the campaign would know, that I was very frustrated with the condition of a lot of the houses in Belville. And I was pretty clear that I wanted to make sure that we stayed on top of that as much as possible, and I was kind of happy, nearly a year ago, if I have it, yeah, nearly a year ago, in November, I read an article about Belville lawyer to tackle zombie property. So at that time, it seemed as though the township had somebody that was gonna be dealing with this particular topic. So up until, I just recently, we just both recently found out that that's no longer the case, but as of the recent past. So I just want to know what, I guess that kind of goes back to us discussing some of the action plans that we've discussed in the past. I always envisioned that there would be some kind of a database, whether it's just a simple Excel file, that's got literally like just the basics, the address of all the empty houses or foreclosed houses, no, abandoned houses, the status, are they privately owned, or they bank-owned, the last time we touched them, the last time we violated them, the last time we reached out to them, how far off we are to foreclosing on them, can we knock them down? I'm happy that we did get one house knocked down in Silver Lake, I'm happy that overlooked, actually, to Silver Lake, well, Silver Lake, what, what? Yes. At least one on either little or overlooked, seemed the boards are down, seems like they must have auctioned that, and somebody's in there now. But I think we should, we have to take it after the role of this, they blight the neighborhood, it just looks terrible. You ever try and live next to one, you ever try and rent a house next to one? I have firsthand experience with that, it's not easy, and it just bites the town, so can we come up with a reconstitute? I mean, we have, if you read this article, and not that I trust everything that's written in the local papers, but it seemed as if that we created either inspector position or something along those lines, and there was one person that we were gonna designate to tackle that, and actually says to tackle zombie houses. So if that, if we no longer have that, can we reconstitute that? I think we have to make this a priority.
Mayor, I...
I don't know if you ever saw the...
I did. We spoke about it. Mr. Kandari, who had been enlisted to do that, did provide me with a...
It was worked on.
A spreadsheet, so we do have a list, I just haven't, it was provided to me, you just brought it up to me this past week, so I haven't even looked at it yet. So we do have some handle on what's out there and what status they are, I just don't know...
I saw that list, the one early on, and I guess my transition, and...
No, there's an update.
Okay, 'cause the boarded up house next to my mother on Drummond Street, I wasn't even listed on there, that house been boarded up for three years.
Yeah, I don't know, I had it, I have, we provided to me, and a memo as to the status of each one.
Okay, so we have something to hand off to somebody to keep the ball rolling, I guess. We have the ability to get aggressive with these, we really do, I'd like to try and get as aggressive as possible.
Only as far as property maintenance is concerned, where banks are not holding up their end of the obligation, where they're taking these homes in foreclosure, and they're not maintaining them, and it's like one piece of butter, one piece attracts another piece, and eventually you have enough.
I like the concept, we used to do it years ago, the clean and leans, I know we still do it now, but again, it's not, and I mean, I'm becoming a broken record, but it's not proactive enough, I think, in my opinion, I think unless I drive by, take a picture, email to you, and then you get on site, we're just not proactive enough on it. We're responsive, when an elected official or somebody else drives by it, or somebody complains to us, I really think that we need to be proactive about it. I mean, clean and lean, you can get a pickup truck, a leaf blower, one lawnmower, and two guys, and you could probably knock out 10, 15...
Easy.
Knock out a bunch. I mean, we're not manicuring the lawn, we're just taking three feet of grass and cutting it down, to that effect, oh, I'm gonna get on that, my marriage course, but we did get some leadway with Route 21.
You know, that is sort of deep, excuse me, there's some, trying to stretch on the grass, but what happened, the way to do with the snow, that people that are not there...
That house next to Drummond Street, they never shovel, ever.
There's a lot of that.
So if they don't shovel, if people aren't gonna walk through it, they're going to shoot anyway. So if we could reconstitute and refresh that initiative, I've worked with Mr. Martino on that.
Who is the one who enforces the abandoned property registration? Is that code officials?
Codes began doing some of that, alright, and then Mr. Kandari was going to pick up the rest of that, and actually came up with an overall plan, alright, on how to do that.
Because we do have the ordinance in place for the registration and the fees.
Click fees and everything.
Collect fees in the end, no, I mean, we have to deal with the, collect fees, you know, when the house sells, or...
No, well, we were trying to do it, like, I mean, that's if you lean it, but the whole thing was to do it proactively every year, to get fees from them every year.
As an incentive, so they don't have it abandoned.
So they don't have it abandoned.
It's more so about stabilizing neighborhoods and upgrading neighborhoods, making neighborhoods attractive, to retain the good folks that we have, and to attract other good folk on Belville.
It's, you and I have had a conversation about freeing up somebody that would have the ability just to literally drive maybe each ward every single week and log all the, or take down physically all the signs that are on poles, and all the, we've seen some stores that are clogged, and just identify those areas to help our GBW identify certain, certain non-lighted areas, I guess, that would work.
Absolutely, yes.
Just so inclined, I think that works. You mean? Ending that one, I'm getting to you there, Councilman, I'm gonna hold off on vision for right now. Commissions, we, I've had a conversation with Mr. Martino on that one, I'm satisfied with his legal prowess on that one, I think. Commissions?
What is the commissions?
I just had a conversation with the town attorney on that one. I was, we have a lot of, we have a lot of different committees, councils, commissions. I was always in the impression that you kind of want to stay away from commissions, because they can spend money, and you're supposed to fund them, so we've had some conversations on that, and I defer to council on that one.
Yeah, I mean, it depends on what you're talking about, there's no hard and fast rule with respect to it.
Okay.
There's certain committees that are permitted by statute, like our historic commission committee.
Commissions.
Commission is permitted by statute, there are other areas that we have, that are permitted, and that do have to be funded, because there's a reason they have to be funded.
So does a commission have to be funded?
It depends on what it is, if it's statutory or not. So there are statutory ones.
We have an historic commission.
Right, and our, I was able to get from the clerk's office, our ordinance on the historic preservation, and it's excellent, it's exactly what it's, what it's now, it's diplomated properly, and it's done properly. So you want to look at them individually, you can do that. So if funding is needed to make it work properly, then that's, you know, what you'll do, you know, so that, I mean, it's just not hard and fast.
Right, when I came in July 1, I had a stack of committees, commissions, things to fill, which is kind of, we've been slowly working our way through, but we had like a 9/11 committee, we had a 9/11 commission, we had, it just seems like there's a lot of redundancies there, there's multiples, and I'm still trying to get my hands wrapped around it, but I was just in the impression that commissions were kind of their own entity, I didn't know if they had the ability to actually, since they are an entity, to actually get their own money, so, but again, that's a moot point now, I defer to our council on that one.
You have a question? You just don't like to defer to council.
I'm admitting that you want, I'm telling you that...
It's not a question of one ear, it's a question of what's doing right.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Gracianno's got a bunch of different items on here, we're good on time, so...
We'll be sure.
Councilman?
No, thank you. The first one I have is about garbage. I want to share with you something that happened to me directly, so, about three weeks ago, I changed out my front door, and I call it a storm door, but it's a forever door, it has a big glass, you know, in the front of it. So I called up, and I wanted to find out how the garbage was taken away from the house. So they said, "Okay," and I didn't mention council, I just called up, went into a conversation, and then I mentioned that it was a storm door, but they said, "Is it glass?" I said, "Yes," and "We don't take glass." "Okay, who takes the glass?" Well, got into back and forth, so the bottom line is, I had to take the screen, the glass out, put it aside, no problem, and then I said, "Well, I know somebody, you know, I'll pay to have it removed." "Well, who is that person?" "Well, that's my business." That's one thing. So, and anything else you have that's metal, put out on the curb. So I put the old frame beds out, right? Because I, for whatever reason, I'm looking for my door, so, they come, they take the screen door, they leave my frame, now it's there. So then, three weeks later, which happened this past week, on a different part of the neighborhood, I saw a vanity go out with a mirror, huge glass mirror, it's taken. I'm just sharing, because what, as taxpayer, what does a resident, when they call up, what is the cost?
What can they expect?
What can they expect? If it's not taking part of garbage, we maybe have to look at that with garbage, you know, is it glass or is it a mirror, I don't know, but I'm just saying, it's a little...
Confusing.
It's a little confused.
Yeah, I'm nearly certain somewhere in this twenty-something page document, it does list what's bulk and what's not, and what's allowed.
It's very, very confusing.
Well, yeah, you need to...
It is, I don't believe, I don't believe so, but anyway, I just wanted to share that, and if it's something to do, because I know there was other garbage concerns, if we don't pay for glass, you know, I mean, am I gonna sit there and break this piece of big glass up to put it in a vat of garbage, can I recycle it?
I found mirror glass in here.
Okay.
Leave that curb for bulk pickup.
Okay, so then why wasn't I told that?
But then it also says arrange your own pickup.
So, okay.
I think this is why we need Jaffe communication.
Exactly, I call the same venue. And then, and then it goes to another, so I received another complaint.
It does have an asterisk, though.
So I received...
Can you read the asterisk?
So, I mean, you see, the medical complaint actually yesterday, a family called me, they're in Belleville, five, six, maybe seven years, they have water in their basement because of a break that happened, they, long story short, they threw a whole bunch of garbage, they had a, they didn't throw, they accumulated a whole bunch of garbage in their basement, it smelled and weighed, so they didn't know any better, they were told that they could take it down to the town, they took it, they rented a truck, they didn't have any, they dropped it down at the town, and then the next day they know, because they rented for Enterprise, what ended up happening was Enterprise called them and said, hey, you know, we have a complaint from the town because you, you don't do legally, so in the person...
How much money they paying taxes, you think?
I didn't get, I don't know, so, the bottom line is, again, there's no clear cut, and I'm glad Jaffe came in, because this is the kind of stuff that needs to be communicated, it really, really does, because what is it, what, do we do it or don't we do it? Is it allowed to dump, do we drop off or not, I don't know.
I, I didn't, I know you had garbage on here, I didn't know exactly where you were going with it, I saw today, and I have a picture of it, it does seem, it does seem, I know we have a director here, it does seem kinda weird because it, it says, there's a sign that says for use by Belleville residents only, photo IDs required, it would imply that you can drop off if need be, because it says for use by Belleville residents only, so that does imply that you can drop off, so we don't, I'm confused as to why, can we or can't we do...
You could drop recycling off, you can drop garbage, we're not a, we're not a transfer station, that's what...
They're dumping construction debris a lot, that's what they're catching on, it's sheik rock and studs and concrete.
So maybe just like I'm saying, I just got a, I got a call, I guess, you know, so you got a council, they called, they wanted to understand why, so I just brought it to our attention, that's all.
We take the recycling, but we don't pick up recycling.
No.
We have an outside company that does.
Yes.
But we can accept it, but we can't accept...
We can accept it because we have dumpsters.
Alright, we can't accept, right, I think that's kinda what everybody doesn't understand, the difference of that.
Say something about construction debris and stuff like that.
Might just look...
Billy, wouldn't that also apply to the storm door that the council was referring to?
Oh, that, I think that's...
You brought the storm door and the glass, both items are in fact recyclable?
Yeah, they actually took the door, I was saying, they didn't take the door, but they won't take the metal of the door.
Who's the day, though? Our garbage contractor or...
No, I called, I called RDBW, I spoke...
So that's different, that's two different...
Well, I, I called down and I, I asked a question.
Right.
I just wanted to know, and like, to six minutes and thirty-six seconds, I got the wrong answer.
That might be, uh, construction debris, they might consider that.
Yeah, but isn't construction debris like a contractor loading, unloading their debris, I don't think if you replace a door...
We need clarification on a lot of these areas and perhaps frequently asked questions to be posted and maybe distributed included in that, that new and improved calendar when we redo it, so that it is simple for folks, so, I mean, most people wanna follow the rules, it's just confusing to them.
Well, in this situation, they were probably trying to help out by delivering it down and just didn't...
That's all, that's all they wanted to do, is get at their house, they didn't want to leave it in front of their house, and they were told that they can drop, but again, not knowing the rules and regulations, I guess, because of whatever reasons.
It shouldn't be in a situation where no good deed goes unpolished.
So I just wanted to share it, okay.
Okay, good point.
That's it, the second one is the signs, so, I think we did a great job and, and the town did a great job in wanting the, uh, the art sales, great job, you know, everybody participated, how many, hundred, fifty?
Two, two hundred, two hundred and one, oh, sorry, I was gonna say...
And if you drive around today, you're still gonna see signs on poles, which is really, I think, it's, it's not a good thing for Belleville, and, you know, who, who's responsible, is your, or, do we have an ordinance against putting signs on poles? Who's, who's responsible to take them off?
Who puts them up? Well, no, if you're not allowed to put them up, then you're not responsible to take them down, you can't have them at one place.
So, I thought you were allowed to put them up, but you had to take them down.
Yeah.
Can't put them up at all.
The orders you read from sixteen years ago on the website might say that.
So, so we're not allowed to put any kind of sign up?
That's what, I was in the impression, but, I don't know, so again, confusion, right? It's, we just wanna make it clear and cut, that's, and, and as you drive around Belleville, I mean, things are, you know, we're beautifying, we're trying to do, you know, we're doing the right things, and now you see the posters.
I think where we could help, and, and again, it seems to all fall back on the communication, but I think a very simple solution is we require now everybody to get a CO, even apartment COs, so if, the, especially for a new resident, if, when they get a CO either for the apartment or for the house, if we can give them like, like a welcome, you know, here's, here's our recycling thing, and by, what I like to do, and I've seen this in other towns that I've worked in, is they literally have something that says, congratulations on welcome to Belleville, let's just say, you just recently closed on your house, more than likely you'd probably have a survey handy, keep that survey in a safe place, because if you ever wanna have a pool, a deck, a shed, and you're gonna need a permit for that, that step right there, as simple as that sounds, short circuits a lot of issues down the road, one, they go to sell their house three years later, they did a deck without a permit, now they're trying to get a permit for something that was built three years ago, they're having a hassle, they can't get a CO to sell, and they're calling your office, or they're calling the council person up, now we're trying to go back three years, if we just did a better job, I mean, it all does seem to come back to communication, but if we just did a better job of communicating with people, like, you know, hey, this is what you gotta do, you know, if you wanna permit, this is what you need, these are the hours that we're open, we're open late, soon, like every other Wednesday, matching course, I think, I think that'll work, and, and again, it just comes back to the communication, I think that we could alleviate a lot of those issues if we just did a better job, we went the bulk stuff, and a perfect example, I've been on a tear lately with the blinking lights and all the businesses, and I've been on a tear with it, and we've stopped, we've gotten a couple of them stopped, but again, they get a business license every year, if we just said, you're not supposed to fill up more than fifty percent of your windows with signage, you're not supposed to have blinking lights, if we just had a piece of paper, like you said before, the frequently asked question, if we just gave some, it would save, we send somebody out and they, for a CO inspection, because they're selling their house, we find a deck, now we have to go backwards, we have to get another inspector out, we're making repeated visits while people are already waiting two or three weeks for inspections, we could alleviate a lot of that stuff, just some better communication.
Two more, fast things.
And these are, here?
Yeah, well, yeah, they're a part of the other...
We have one more presentation, but...
Real fast, Mr. Street cleaning, right, I have gotten a lot of complaints from Greylock Parkway during school hours, where the street cleaners come up, they're actually on school hours, the buses are back, they're, they're being, you know, traffic is, is crazy, the kids are actually getting, when it, when a sweeper goes around...
By five?
Uh-huh, way up, Greylock, and then, yeah.
I've seen them drive by right as kids are getting out of...
As kids getting out of school, so, A, you know, it's, it's, the, the kids are getting splashed with their, if you will, or whatever, their debris, and then, you know, traffic, safe security, that kinda stuff, so I just wanted to share it with you, that, and I, I...
Yeah, and actually, you did, Councilman, and I did share that with Billy, and we have changed the times and the sweepers...
Do we need to do that by order?
Where?
I'm sorry?
Do we need to do that by, no, because it was a big enough window.
We start at the other end, and we end up...
Right, just be sensitive to the fact that what the children are going into school and coming out of school.
And the parking too, I mean, because it's bad enough, I mean, with, with the, the parents parking and kids get, so, just that, but thank you.
That was one of your various items.
Yes, and then, just a question on, uh, when we walked Washington Avenue, firehouse doors, and I know that we were working on that, I was just getting a...
Yes, actually, we got a, we got a quote on the firehouse doors and I authorized them to change it.
Great, thank you.
Capital, absolutely.
Okay, that, 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 and then, say...
You skipped over your three, is the randomized one?
I'm, uh, well, shared service, where's the shared service, okay, the human resources, I'm going next, the human resources, as I was looking through, like I said, the ordinances and I'm reading, I was actually looking at, uh, chapter two, administration, going through stuff like that, there's a lot of, there's a lot of verbiage in there, and, verbiage, I should say, and they talked about, they talked about, let me see, like, number two? Oh, medical benefits, healthcare, stuff of that nature, so I just wanted to see, I just had questions around that and the ordinances, so how do we go about looking at the ordinances in depth, do we have a committee to do this? Can we talk, can we, I don't know if we have a committee, because there's a lot of, which leads me to your first question, when I talk about, I'm like, I know I'm all over the place here, but, which leads me to, uh, where is, I'm gonna, it's, yeah, the benefits, it says for employees, right, so define employees, are we employees?
You gotta check you're an employee.
Right, so, is that documented, is there, is there, is, is all of this, which leads you to my HR, is there an HR department, to where we have all of this stuff documented so we know who, what, where, and when?
We, we have an employee manual, right? That was part of...
We have a manual, and typically, HR type questions are handled out of the manager's office.
Okay, okay, so, it's just a lot on ordinances, like you said, with the property ordinances, it's the health benefits, is, do we have a committee for that, that maybe we can form and look at them in deep depth to start looking at them, is that something that we can entertain?
I think like Mike was just discussing, the codification is, is really the issue for us, as soon as we get that updated and we have something we can look at, then it would be pertinent to do that for you, you know what I'm saying?
It's, it's, we don't even know what we're looking at unless we specifically ask the clerk for a specific ordinance, I know you had asked a question about fences and decks and, and all that a while ago.
I just look for property, I just, just on basic property.
It's not that easy to figure out, but we definitely want, I mean, for, just to give an example, something about the sheds, I, I have an issue with our zoning when it comes to sheds, being four feet off the property line, I mean, your shed is, is, it's in the center of your backyard at some point, the decks, the incense for the deck, my, my deck in my house does not come off my house, I have the back of my house, I had in-depth my deck about two feet because of my side yard, so it, it's just, there's things that don't make any sense.
Right, because, and that's what came up about the healthcare, so I apologize, when I looked at, on the back, the last, last line that's at ordinance, it referred to ordinance number 2905, which was a different ordinance that this was, so I said, you know, I searched 2905, where is it, so then, no one came, where is that, well, it gets put into this ordinance, well, where's the doc that it was approved and shown by, where is it, so that's what posed the other questions of who, what, where, and when, that's why I was just asking.
Yep.
That's all, Mr. ...
That's it? You have your shared, you're good with shared?
Free.
No more barriers?
Shared's done?
For now.
For now, okay, and my resources is done, health benefits is done, that was the question about the ordinance, I guess, the employer, okay, so I have one more item here, it is Vision Media newsletters, we just had a presentation by someone talking about communications and how we could better communicate with the public, I think that, and it's, might sound odd coming from me, because I'm a web guy, I'm a social media guy, a lot of our residents are on the internet, are on social media, a lot of our older stakeholders, our senior citizens are not on social media, are not on Facebook, I was an advocate of taking this, I know Rose not here now, the manager's always, but she kinda compiles this, I have taken this in one of my other clients and streamed it down to either a web document or just an oversized postcard, and she insists that the residents, especially the older residents, love it, and they want it and all that stuff, so, having, the issue that we have with this is this is, we print this, it begins in August, it usually doesn't come out until September, and we need to know our just the party dates and all of our dates a year ahead of time, it just doesn't work, if we, rather than just do this as a yearly, and we just broke it down into a quarterly, and instead of having all of this other fluff, I mean, there are things in here from the county about, there, I mean, there's a whole page in here just on, on an October event in the county, so instead of mailing this out once a year and having it be twenty-something pages, if we just did something quarterly and incorporated the recycling schedule in that, we could probably do a better job of updating residents on an upcoming event or something like that, because we have that leadway to do that, so with that being said, we're not professional writers, that's not really what we do, drawing off my experience in other municipalities, I've seen it work really well where you could just do a quarterly newsletter, it probably would be a net even cost, but we would get a much better bang for our buck, in order to do that, we need to sit down with somebody and talk to them about four or five different stories, or four or five different articles, or four or five different initiatives that we wanna highlight, and have somebody do that, with that being said, our next presentation is Phil Swobinski from Vision, and I've seen their work before, they work in a bunch of Hudson County towns, they do a lot of things, I don't wanna just pigeonhole you into being a newsletter company, but communications are what they do, and newsletters, I know, I've seen your work before, that's clearly what you do, so we're a little short on time, five minutes or so, if you're good, just a kinda broad stroke overview of what, what you can do.
Absolutely, thank you Mayor and Councilmembers and Administration for having us here, my name is Phil Swobinski, as the mayor mentioned, my, my company is called Vision Media, we're based in Seacaw, and we do public relations, communications consulting, primarily for government entities with several municipalities, also for other clients, but obviously, we're here to talk about municipalities, we do work in Bluefield, right next door, as well as several towns in Hudson County and a few in Bergen County, and different other government entities such as the school districts, county agencies, but the mayor mentioned is something that we deploy a lot of is municipal newsletters, and I have some examples here from other places that I can pass around, if you guys would like to see, so, you know, they come in a lot of different shapes and sizes depending on different needs and different priorities in different communities, but like the mayor said, you know, it's a way to, to reach every constituent, every resident, even if they're not online, if they're not on social media, and get something in their home that they can see, and it's a way to communicate, you know, both the great things that are happening here in Belleville that, that the, you know, the elected officials are helping to happen, also, you know, the nitty-gritty information needs to get out there, like the mayor mentioned, the recycling calendar, you know, those are things that if not sent to the resident's house, you know, they might, they might not ever see it, it might, it might screw up their schedule and, you know, end up becoming a problem for everybody else, so, you know, you can see some of the stuff we've done in other areas, from Hackensack, Worth Bergen, Bluefield, a few others in there, you know, we would love the opportunity to work with you guys here, you know, develop some cost estimates we could discuss, you know, or, you know, at another time and, or now, and, you know, we, we have a lot of experience in this area, as I mentioned, we've worked with a lot of municipalities, and we'd love the chance to partner with Belleville.
The thought, and it's just my thought at this point, we could open up the conversation, but you weren't here for some of the conversation earlier, but we have a twenty-four page document...
Yeah, if you have to take a look.
That's mailed out, you guys should have that one, it's, it's got a typo on it, so that's basically a twenty-four page document, that, that's basically our recycling and garbage schedule, and it starts in August, but we don't usually get it out till sometime in September, and my thinking is that because we then plan so many other events, that we have to pick dates out a year in advance to get there, if instead of just mailing that out once a year, we divided that into three or four, and mailed out the next three or four months quarterly with some of the work that you do with some pertinent articles or initiatives or upcoming events or new initiatives again, but it kinda combined the newsletter with that, because there's already a budget for that, and we're already printing it and mailing it, and there's already quantified a budget for that, if we could divide that into three and then get more of a bang for our buck, I mean, they, they work, I, I have to, like I said, I work in twenty other towns, I have, my company has physically done newsletters before, we've done them in Lynnhurst and Lodi, and they, they love it, I mean, the photography is usually included, you could, you know, you get your chance to say, we all know that we have difficulty informing our older residents, and as the gentleman said earlier, local newspapers are gone, so, I mean, you have Belleville Times is still around, you might get one article a week out of that thing, there's nothing else around for them to put their hands on, hang on their, hang on their refrigerator and read, this is our way of, another avenue to... This is our way of, another avenue to communicate. And I think it could really be a net, I don't know if it'd be a net even, but it'd be pretty close, I would think, if we just divided that by three. I think you'd be mailing it two more times, probably, because we're already mailing that once, so, but.
Yeah, and just like the mayor was saying, something we emphasize to our clients is, like you said, with the decline of, you know, the local print media, you really have to create your own platforms for people to be able to get information, whether that's, you know, the town, the town website, social media platforms, or, you know, sending out publications. If it's not done, it's just unlikely that people are gonna find out or whatever's going on.
And I, I like the shotgun approach, I mean, we hit people on websites, I mean, the municipal websites are for those people that are interested in something specific, they want a phone number, they wanna download a document, they wanna see a calendar. Most people aren't coming to it just to search, but most will come across a social media post just because they have bad social media. So, the township has official social media platforms, a lot of the elected officials up here have our own, we probably reach far more people than the town does. But again, that's only reaching a certain segment of the population. I feel that we often leave out some of the, the people that are more important stakeholders, that really do rely on our services, sometimes more than the younger residents that we have. And if we could just, I, I like to get a lot of bang for my buck, I could increase that, which I'm not happy with, I'm a designer by trade, so I'm not happy with the way that looks and the way that feels, if we could improve that and then get more content and more information being transmitted through it, and more timely, because we could, we could do it every three or four months, we don't have to put a year's worth of content in there, I just think that's more advantageous, I think.
That was good, I like that. The Bluefield buzz, that's a little too confusing, that's.
Bluefield buzz.
Buzz, that was, and one of those, that, that, that too much, but.
Yeah, that's, that's a little different.
The fold is good, it's easy.
Yeah, the buzz is a little different from what you guys are talking about, they only do that twice a year, and it is a thicker thing, almost similar to this. A lot of the other ones that you see are more, you know, kinda, yeah, and, and a little more, you know, design focused, and, you know, kinda focused, like, like the mayor said, on the, the images and the design, and you wanna make it attractive for people, still